Welcome to today's meeting of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Roll call. I'm sorry. We'll have the invocation and the flag salute, and then we'll have our roll call. Let us stand. Lord God, we thank you for this day. We pray your blessing upon us as we come to conduct city business. Father, we pray that you give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session for the purpose of enticing economic development within the northwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee, including the possible negotiation and execution of an economic development agreement, and take other necessary action in open session. B, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the purpose of enticing economic development within the northwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee, including providing financial assistance for infrastructure improvements, and take other necessary action in open session.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, we will now convene into executive session. All those who are not privy to that session, please excuse yourselves at this time. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, we will now convene into executive session. All those who are not privy to that session, please excuse yourselves at this time. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item B.
Pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive session for the purpose of enticing economic development and having discussions regarding the same within the northwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee, including providing financial assistance for infrastructure improvements. An appropriate motion would be to provide financial assistance for economic development from the economic...
Opportunity.
What is that word?
Opportunity.
Opportunity amount.
Account.
Account to assist with infrastructure improvements in the northwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee.
Not excuse me.
In the amount of $50,000.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item B. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the special call agenda for the Muskogee City Council for Friday, April 7, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yeah.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2928 regarding the participation in the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, recognition program, and receive a presentation from O-MAG on best practices for Oklahoma municipalities and their governing bodies, and take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Yes, sir. We have O-MAG here today, the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Recognition Program. They are going to present to us the best practices for Oklahoma municipalities and their governing bodies. And we have Mr. David Weatherford. And if you can, Mr. Weatherford, introduce your colleagues.
Yes, Mr. Bill Tackett for O-MAG, and Bill will go first.
Afternoon, Mayor. It's an honor to be back in Muskogee again, and good to see my friend Mike back.
Thanks, Bill.
Appreciate all the years I've been able to work with Mike. My name is Bill Tackett, and I'm with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Some of you all are new since the last time we were here and did this training, but we've undertaken this training numerous times in Muskogee before. And as a matter of fact, as David Weatherford and I go around the state and present this training to about 200 cities and towns now since David began the program, we point to Muskogee as one of the successes, as you guys have done important work as a consequence of us being able to come and present this material. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here. For those of you that are new, O-MAG is your insurance provider. We are not a private insurance company. We're a Title 74 interlocal cooperative act agency. And Title 74, in my opinion, is the most powerful tool cities and towns have, all substate governments have. It says basically, very simply, whatever Muskogee can do by itself, you can find a partner, do it with them. It's just that simple. That partner, in O-MAG's case, is 500 cities and towns that belong to us. June 1, 1977, we got started with Choctaw and the Village. Those are two suburbs of Oklahoma City. And since that time, we've grown to 500 cities and towns. And we've had 500 cities and towns participating in our plans and being our members for decades. And so it's a very powerful tool. You can find a partner with a school, a county, a tribe, federal government, Carrollton, Texas, lots of different folks out there you could partner up with. Because we're a public entity risk pool and not a private insurance company, we look to return value to our members primarily through ways that reduce our loss exposures. And so we have a lot of tools for police. We have Lexa Poll for your policy book and training. Matter of fact, if your police department uses Lexa Poll and participates in the daily training bulletins, they can get eight hours of CLEC credit per year without ever leaving town, without ever leaving their patrol car. Eight hours is a third of the required hours every year. You have to have 24 hours of CLEC training every year. So eight hours is at no cost to you, don't have to leave town, and you're training against your own policies. We also have grants for body worn cameras for police and have had probably for close to 10 years. For Public Works, we have programs for public work safety equipment and work safety zones. And we also have tools that examine, evaluate, and identify your sanitary sewer collection system, your sewer lines. We have a program that can map your sewer system, color coded as to the condition of the system, and overlay it on Google Earth on top of the city of Muskogee. It can map all of your system. The things that cost you money through O-MAG, the things that cost our members money through claims, we call the three Ps. That'll be personnel. When people have adverse personnel actions, they tend to get cranky. When folks get arrested or poked with a taser, they tend to get cranky. And when people have poo in their house, they tend to get cranky. And all of those things wind up with claims that O-MAG has to work. So police, personnel, and poo. And believe it or not, sewer, sanitary sewer backups are most frequent claim and sometimes our most expensive claim. So we have those tools that we make available to our members. Obviously, Muskogee is one of our larger members. Most of our towns are like Boynton and much smaller places. But we're glad to be back here and present this training. So as we looked at the police and we looked at the Public Works, we looked at our scholarships and our grants for city managers to go to city managers' conferences, clerks to go to clerks' conferences, mayors to go to mayor's conferences, folks to go to the municipal league training. We looked around and said, what kind of training is available for the people that are the board of directors of this municipal corporation? And the municipal league has the newly elected officials training. That's one day, and we don't fuss with that training. That's fine. But the program that we use with David Weatherford is that we come on site. It's a four-step program, includes a council handbook. And if you complete those steps, we will pay you money for listening to us. Mom says that's the only way I can get people to pay attention, but if that's what it takes, we don't care. And we do cap that at $10,000. So for participating in the program, it's not a credit on your bill. We will write you a check for up to $10,000. And so as a board of directors of this municipal corporation, we felt like it was important for us to bring the training to you so you would understand your role, your responsibilities, and the job that the folks actually expect you all to do, especially in the council manager form of government. We partnered with David Weatherford a long time ago, longer than 10 years ago. The material that we use is David's intellectual property and creation. David's graduate of Oklahoma State University and University of Tulsa Law School. He started his public practice as a city attorney in 1988. I can always remember that. That's the year before Taylor Swift was born, so that ought to be able to stick with most of you all as well. People keep laughing at that, so I keep saying it. David's tired of hearing it. David was city attorney for Coe- for Coeida for about 27 years. He's currently the city attorney for Manford and Mounds and Arkoma, Oklahoma, and Sand Springs, Oklahoma. So David's been a city attorney since 1988. He also has a private practice that he's engaged in. David is a member of the Hall of Fame for city and town officials. He was inducted into that. He's a thought leader, and he's really a great partner to have for us. And so this material is the material that David has developed. We've been all around the state. David and I hitch my wagon to David. We've been to probably close to 200 towns. You'll take a stability test today, and David will go over that with you, but you all that have been here before have taken that test. The value of that test is a couple of things. Number one, over 1,000 people have taken this test, and we believe people give an honest answer. And sometimes, very infrequently, once in a while, we'll get somebody who'll put a bunch of zeros or ones. You know, they're kind of like Eeyore and Winnie the Pooh. Nothing's right with them. And sometimes we'll get people that'll put all tens. They're Chamber of Commerce folks. It's always sunshiny in Muskogee. And that's really not what we're after. We're after what you really think the situation is today, because we'd like you all to take this test every year, whether we come in person or not. The value of the test is a part of a process. And you all are in the process business, not the event business. And so if you take it every year, 10 years from now, the people who are sitting in your seats will say, well, we're getting better in these areas of municipal operation. We're staying the same here, and we're getting worse here. That has a lot of value, I think. You know, everything is a process and not just a series of events. We're either benefiting from or suffering from the decisions that got made five, 10, 50 years ago.
Right.
And in 2032, those people either be benefiting or suffering from the decisions we make. And so if we just look at Simon Sinek's Infinite Game Book, we understand players come and go, but the game continues. Muskogee's got a long horizon. We'll be here for a very long time, and we just do our part when our tenure is underway. And we just, like everybody else, are trying to leave it better than we found it. And so we're very, very grateful to be in partnership with David. Aubrey Weatherford is a part of municipal consultants. She's actually the one that does all the work, and we appreciate everything that she does for us as well. So David will present this material. Thank you for having us out. It's really good to be back in Muskogee.
Thanks, Bill. Some of you have been through it before. Bill turns it over to me, and we get to take a test. So let me give you a little bit of background. I'm not going to spend any background on mine. Bill talked too long about that. We started this training program, I started it 15, 20 years ago, because I was not happy with the way cities functioned. It should be a good place to work. It should be a good place for each of you to serve, and we should be evaluating how we're doing things with the idea that we can make it better. That should be our goal. And so we started the training program because there wasn't one for the elected officials, all with the idea that we can make it better over time. And if we look at it that way, I think we can make some good progress, and I think I can point to some examples of things Muskogee has done to make great progress by doing their own self-evaluation and putting their own work into it. I've told this story a few times. My very first job as a city attorney, my very first week on the job, a mayor called me and said, I've got a meeting coming up. I just need to know if you need to be there. And I asked him, well, who are you meeting with? He said, I don't remember the guy's name. All I remember is it said OSBI after his name. Do you know who that is? And I said, well, I think I have a good idea. Why does he want to meet with you? And he said, something about some meeting act. I don't know what that is. And this is my first week, and he had been mayor for several years. He'd never seen the Open Meeting Act. He'd never been provided a copy. He'd never been told what the rules and regulations were for how we should be doing business. And that started me thinking about how we need to have it in writing and the concept that we should have a handbook for the elected officials, because it's unfair to you if you don't know the rules. And we need to know the rules. Our meeting went on, and it came out okay, and no charges were filed against them because it was not that serious what they had done wrong. But in 27-plus years in that city, that was the last time they were accused of an open meeting violation, because our attitude's got to be to go above and beyond. So that's one premise of this, is to make sure that we know what the rules are, both on ethics and meetings, so that everyone's on the same page and we don't have a problem. My motive was very selfish. I wanted it to be a better place to work, because I worked in a couple of cities that were very difficult. And those serving did not enjoy it. The employees didn't enjoy it. And we know that that builds instability over time. My experience has been that most of those who get elected want to do the right thing. They really do. They want to serve their community with honesty and integrity and do the right thing. And sometimes we just need to understand what that is a little bit better and what the rules are and how we can do that. How can we be stable over time? We're going to ask you to take this test, and I'm going to ask you to think of it as a self-evaluation. We're not going to take it. We're going to ask you to. And take it with the attitude that you're evaluating and not judging, and you're evaluating with the idea that we're going to ask how we can get better in each of these 10 categories of city government. A group of experts helped compile the list of 10 categories, and I think they are the relevant topics that we should be evaluating. So I'm going to ask you to give a score of somewhere between 1 and 10 in each of the 10 categories. I'm going to explain what each one means, and then we'll go from there. First one is how financially sound is your city? A 10 would be that city that has a reserve policy that establishes the amount of savings you should retain, and you fully fund it. Okay? Has everyone got a score sheet? So that would be a 10. A 1 would be, we're not sure we can make payroll next week. And we've been in cities in which the elected officials are concerned about their ability to pay payroll. We've been in cities in which elected officials have said, I have no idea. I don't get financial reports, because there is no state law that says you shall get this level of reporting on a regular basis. We're trying to bring some uniformity to that. So for Muskogee, for your point, and we're going to cheat on this question and ask Mike a little bit of help, what score would you give?
I gave us a 9, because we do have written policy, and we're real close to 20%, but not quite there.
Good. And I could guess that's what his answer was going to be, because I've seen your policy, and Bill and I use Muskogee as an example around the state of a city who took this very seriously and adopted a very good policy. We usually say, our sample policy is not as good as Muskogee's. Look at theirs, because your staff, and we didn't do it, you did it. Your staff did a great job of coming up with a financial reserve policy that is intended to make Muskogee stable over a long period of time. So that's a good thing, and all of you should be happy with that. And hopefully, the point of the policy is to give you guidance and budget. And hopefully, it does that, and to give you, as elected officials, some assurance that our city is financially sound, because the public expects us to be financially sound as a city, just as they do their bank. And that's important. Okay? So give a score on financial stability. Question number two, as you get to evaluate each other. How do you rate the governing body? A 10 is a city in which we have honest, well-meaning elected officials. If we have vacancies, we attract good candidates. It's considered an honor to serve as an elected official in this city. That should be our goal. It should be what we're trying to accomplish. A low score, a 1, is the city council that looks around and says, I wish we could throw them all out and start over. And Bill and I have been in many of those cities in which everyone sitting up there wrote down a 1. Okay? So give a score of how you evaluate the governing body, because you should evaluate your performance. Question number three is, how are your city council meetings? High score is you enjoy them. You feel like you're accomplishing the work of the city. It's an important part of what you're doing. A low score is they're miserable, and I hope I never go to another one. I used to tell Bill, out of my first 1,000 council meetings, 900 of them were miserable. And he quickly said, but you were there. That's the only constant in that 900, right? You were there. We should have good meetings. That should be our goal, that they're an enjoyable part of our work. And it's up to the group of you to make sure that occurs. It's not someone else's fault. It's your responsibility. And when we go to those cities that have really bad meetings, I usually ask them, then why do you keep doing it that way? Change it. It's within your control and no one else's. Question number four is, how do we rate the workforce? That's hard to do in a city this size, because you have so many employees and in this form of government, that's really Mike's job, not yours. But overall, is it a good place to work? Because you do set the budget and you do allocate resources and set policy. Have you made it and put effort into making it a good place to work, because it should be? Your employees should enjoy working for the city of Muskogee. Some would say having Good Friday off would make it a better place to work. Right, Tammy? Not to put her on the spot. But high score is our employees work hard. They care about our city. We put thought into how we can make this a good workplace. A low score is that city that just has constant turnover, hard to find anyone to work there, lots of turmoil, lots of lawsuits, lots of claims. And we see that in some cities. Number five is, what's the image of your city? It's a hard thing to evaluate. We're living in an era in which there's a lot of anti-government attitude, and it's very difficult. But in order to be effective as a government, we need to promote our city. A high score is that there's a lot of public confidence in what we do. The public trusts us to do the right thing. Low score is that low level of public confidence in the city as a government. So give a score on public image. I can predict this is, in most places, the most difficult issue. Number six, crisis management. Government exists to deal with those things that go wrong, whether it's a flood, or tornado, or some other disaster that comes along. How well-prepared are we to deal with it? Do we know what to do? Do we have people in place who can respond? And a high score is, we think we're well-prepared. I know you went through a serious flood a few years ago. You've been through disasters. The public expects the city to be prepared and ready for it. Low score is, we stumbled through it. We don't know what to do. How well-prepared are we for that disaster that comes along in that crisis? Okay? Number seven, economic development. You had an economic development meeting before this, so I know you have a good level of involvement in economic development projects. We go to some cities in which their response is, it's none of their business. It's entirely up to the private sector, and as a government, they've decided to stay out of it. So this question is asking, how active are you in economic development projects? A high score is, you've taken it as a role the city is going to play. You're active, and you think you can change and improve the economy of your city. A low score is that city that's opted out and decided not to participate. We know in the metro areas, there's more involvement. In the high-traffic areas, there generally is more involvement. So give a score on it. Number eight is, how well do we do planning and goal-setting as an organization? Have we set clear goals? Have you told Mike what his goals are to accomplish for the city? Have we set clear economic development goals? So a high score is that the group of you have done a good job of working together to identify where you want to go as a city and have outlined that for your staff, so everyone's on the same page, pulling in the same direction. A low score is, we haven't gotten around to that yet. And Bill and I were in a city in which they admitted they don't think they had had any planning-type discussions, long-range planning discussions, in decades. And it showed. And that's got to be a part of what you do as the elected officials, because if we step back and think about what your job is, what is it? And I had the good fortune of being in a city in Arkansas last week, and the name of their board is the Board of Directors. And that's really what you are, the board of directors of this municipal corporation, similar to a board of directors for Walmart. You're to set the long-range goals and the policies for the city to determine where it's going. And that's your job. Think of it as you are the think tank for the city, because everyone in town can have an opinion about what Muskogee should be 10 years or 20 years from now, but the group of you were trusted by the public to figure that out, to decide what you want Muskogee to be. And that's what planning and goal-setting should be, trying to figure that out, working as a group to get there. It doesn't mean a group of individual opinions that everyone else doesn't buy into. It means a group opinion of what we, as a group, think we should be trying to accomplish for a city. I like to use the comparison that serving on city council is a team sport. It's not an individual sport. If you want to play an individual sport, go play golf or join the legislature. But this is a team sport. And some truth there, isn't there, Mayor?
Yeah.
It really is a team sport, isn't it? Number nine, the administration. This is not directed at Mike. It's the upper management of the city. How stable is it? High score is our management has been stable for a long period of time. If we have turnover in the department head or management level, we attract good people. It's considered a good place to work. A low score is that city that has constant turnover and is always battling to get someone who wants to work there. Bill and I were in a city that went through eight city managers in two years. That's not a model that's going to be successful. We know that from the private sector, that constant turnover at management is going to lead to bad results. Just does. So how stable is management? And number 10, how well do we communicate as an organization? Because a lot of times, we see conflict is caused by a failure to communicate very well. Someone's not getting the same level of information, and that's difficult when there's a board of you and not individual rules. It's very difficult for the manager in most places, because there's got to be one set of rules that applies to all of you. He can't have six or seven different communication plans of how to communicate with you. A low score is that city that has constant turnover and is always battling to get someone who wants to work there. Bill and I were in a city that went through eight city managers in two years. That's not a model that's going to be successful. We know that from the private sector. That constant turnover at management is going to lead to bad results. Just does. So, how stable is management? And number 10, how well do we communicate as an organization? Because a lot of times, we see conflict is caused by a failure to communicate very well. Someone's not getting the same level of information. And that's difficult when there's a board of you and not individual rules. It's very difficult for the manager in most places because there's got to be one set of rules that applies to all of you. He can't have six or seven different communication plans of how to communicate with you. So, we've got to communicate well and be on the same page in how we do that. Okay? So, that's the test. We'll gather those up. We'll get a composite score back to Mike. And show you how, as a group, you evaluate yourselves. I know that you've got a draft council handbook. I don't know if you've approved it yet or if it's a part of the resolution you're going to work on today. Katrina, I assume you've had input and had a chance to look at that on the handbook, or Tammy, one of you. Council handbook, have they had a chance?
We've previously adopted the one in previous years. I don't know if we need new action to adopt a new one or not.
Okay. No, if you've got one in place, that's fine.
Yes, we've adopted one in the past.
Okay. Good.
At one of these meetings, one of the officially stamped ones.
Okay. Good. You've already done that. Couple of other things I want to cover. A couple of you, I understand, are new and have not been through this training. Who are the two newest? Good. How long have you been serving? About a year? Less than a year?
Less than a year.
What made you want to be on the city council? Is there one thing that stood out?
Well, I've served on a number of boards. And I would visit the city council meetings regularly.
Okay.
Just to try to see what was going on within the city.
Has it been what you?
I wanted to be a part of it when that opportunity came up.
Good. Good. Has it been an enjoyable experience?
So far.
So far.
So far. Of course, any organization has hiccups.
Sure.
And so, you know, you just move through that and work through it. And as you stated previously, you work as a team.
Work as a team. That's, you know, we've done lots of surveys over the years asking elected officials, "What's the single most important thing you can do to be successful as a board member?" And by far, the overwhelming most important answer is, "We work well as a team." And if we accomplish that, everything else gets easier. And you're fairly new also?
Here.
Here?
Over a year.
A year. So, what made you think this was a good idea?
Well, I've always been like a, I'm a banker here in town. So, I've, for 49 years, so I care about Muskogee. I care about its growth. And there's so many people that want to lay on the couch and gripe about everything that's going on. And sometimes I want to go out and go, "What have you done to change things?" And I felt like I wanted to take it another step.
Good.
And I care about my city.
Well, good. Good. Those are good reasons. Mayor, you've served for a while. What are the difficulties of being mayor in Muskogee?
I think that, for me, one of the most difficult things is getting all of us to rally around a common goal more often. I think that with the team of counselors that we have now, we're past the storming part. We're now forming and norming, I think, really good. I think the next level is to be certain that the nine of us, when we communicate with the public, that we have a uniform message to be sure that they understand that they are, progress is happening, and that we are working hard to make Muskogee a better place.
Good. It is extremely difficult for cities to get the good news out. We do a horrible, statewide, we do a horrible job of that. And it's a shame because a lot of good work is being done. And that's just a challenge. Because it's so easy, just like you said, for some to be critical. But we're doing a lot of good work. And it's just constant in trying to get that word out. What can the other board members do to help your job be easier as mayor? Because being mayor has its own difficulties, too.
It's kind of difficult. I don't think any one particular board member can do a lot more than what they're doing, only because they all have jobs. I think that will help all of us is if there was some type of mechanism where resources were more available for us to be here than more than just on a volunteer basis, because that's challenging. I mean, the nine of us that are here now are extremely dedicated to being certain that Muskogee is better. But as we age out, you know, we need to have preparations for the next generation of younger people to want to serve. And it's going to be challenging, given the way that we're currently set up.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And one of our points in encouraging you to have a handbook is for you, as a group, to entrench how you do business. To pass it, have something to pass on to that next generation that comes in to say, "Here's how and why we do things this way." And I'm going to put some extra work on Katrina without her knowing it and encourage something. And that is, over time, that your handbook should grow. For Katrina and Mike both, to think about this concept of, "How do we make the handbook that orientation document for the new member that tells them everything they need to know when they get elected? How do we make it that? So that we know this is how we do business, and this is why we do it this way." And I think that helps capture what you want to capture. How do we make sure this perpetuates itself? How do we make sure they know that we have this reserve policy, and here's why we did it? And that it's important to keep it over time so that someone new doesn't come in and spend us broke, and the city has to start over. I'll give you an example. I brought one. And this is over 15 years of work. But this is our city council handbook in Sand Springs. And the idea of it is to have everything someone new needs in one place. We have a copy of the charter. We have a copy of the public trust. We have an outline of council role and personnel, why and how it's done, the way it's done in a city-manager city. We have an outline of economic development history so that we can know when someone gets elected and they're told, "Well, you bribed that company to come here." Here's the truth of how we got that business. And here are the important documents related to it. Because sometimes those urban fiction grows, doesn't it? And we need to capture that history a little better. And I think it helps with the image and perpetuate how we do business over time. I'll send it electronically to Katrina, so she'll have it. Like I said...
I was going to ask you that.
I think we can always look at how we do it better. But if we think about it that way, how do we capture your good work so it perpetuates itself? That's one way a council can do that. Some cities have been extremely stable over a long period of time. Some haven't. And when I started doing this training, I tried to figure out how and why that was happening. And we know some things add to it. And if we go through some history with Muskogee, here's the last time we were here. Your average versus state average. Finances was very good. I would much prefer, that question's first on the test for a reason. I'd much prefer that be your high score than anything else. Because it is the single most important. You can't do anything if you're not financially stable. Again, we'll get you your scores soon. 71 statewide average. We see very few cities above 80 and almost none above 90. Because I think most are pretty critical in how they evaluate. We can always do better. So, Muskogee's doing very well with those scores. Financial stability is having sufficient money to survive. You've met that by having a reserve. So, you've done well with that one. Governing bodies and understanding your role. We see a source of conflict in cities in which the roles of the elected officials and the roles of staff get mixed. And we can't do that. You have a, as an elected official, you have an extremely important job, but it is limited. There are some things that are none of your business. And I say that because I get to leave town and because Mike probably doesn't want to be that blunt with you. But there are some things that are just none of your business. And I'll give you an example, the same example I give in lots and lots of other cities. There will become a time, you're going to hear about a city employee who left their employment with the city, and you're going to go to Mike and say, "I really like Joe. I understand he's no longer here. What happened?" And I hope he's going to say, "I can't tell you." Because Joe may have flunked a drug test or stolen from a coworker or had something else horrible that went wrong that should not be publicly disclosed even to you. And I hope he has the ability and the confidence to say, "I wish I could tell you. I just can't, but it's what had to happen." Because sometimes that is the right answer. Because in this form of government, that's his job. I once had a councilman say, "Well, can't you, if we're going to stay out of personnel, can't you guarantee that we're only going to have great employees who never do anything wrong?" No. There is no guarantee of that. You are going to have employees who do things wrong. You're going to have to have someone in this job who's willing to deal with it. And you should feel very grateful that that's not your job. Because it's horrible work, isn't it? It's not the fun part of what we do, is it?
I've enjoyed it at times.
Depending on what they did, right? So, having a governing body that understands they have a limited role is an important part of functioning in a stable way. Because we see the mixing of those roles sometimes that causes conflict. And it's not a good result when we get to that. Should have enjoyable meetings. That's something you can control. Good workforce. An image as a leader and is considered responsive to the public and professional in their dealings. You have a tremendous responsibility as elected officials to perpetuate what the city council in Muskogee is like for the next generation. And you can do that by your behavior and the standard you set. I am convinced, as we measure the stable cities and the less-stable cities around the state, those that have been stable attract good people to serve. And those who have not attract bad people to serve. I once represented the city, and the city council meetings were like the Jerry Springer Show. Guess what? They drew a big crowd, had a huge audience, accomplished very little. And others who enjoyed the Jerry Springer Show wanted to be a part of it. It wasn't good for city government. It may have been entertaining to some. But it's not a good way to do business. That responsibility is your responsibility. Because in those cities in which we have elected officials who misbehave, it attracts others who will do the same. And how the public will behave at your meetings will be determined in large part by how you treat each other. Because the single most important thing you can do in dealing with each other is show a high level of respect. And if you do that, the public will copy that. We know that from watching what goes on in other places. Okay? Some of you may have heard me say this before, but the single most important thing I've heard from a mayor is a mayor I went to and asked him, "Why is your city so stable? Why does the council work as a team so well over such a long period of time? Why has it been that way?" And he said that when he first got elected, he was told the only way his vote would be valuable was that if he respected everyone else's vote, even when he disagreed. And that advice is something he took seriously. And he had taught everyone who had come on since then. Respect the other vote, or yours will become meaningless. And there's a lot of truth in that. We can disagree, as long as we disagree in a civil way. And there's a group of you, because one person's not going to be able to decide everything. And there is room to disagree if we do it the right way. You'll have a written copy of this, so I'm not going to go over a lot of it because you're doing the things you should be doing on economic development and mapping out your future. Continuity in management, you've been very stable. We hear a lot of times, cities that say, "We've always been this way, so that's why we're going to do it that way." I think we should reevaluate sometimes and ask, "Can we do it better?" And one advantage Bill and Aubrey and I have had is we travel around the state and we see great best practices from cities around the state and try to pass on some of those. So, we've covered a few things, a few things new since we've been here. We tried to outline some things that we've seen other places that maybe will help. And this is something we've been presenting over the last year. Trying to ask, challenge you, because I think it helps avoid conflict, to identify what's administrative versus policy. Because we see in a lot of places, there's conflict because the elected officials are hung up on administrative decisions. And I'll give you a good example. It's one that we've run across. Buying something as simple as a police car. Is that an administrative decision or a policy decision? Clearly, when you establish the budget and decide how much you're going to budget to spend on police cars this next year, that's a policy decision. And I assume you're putting police cars in the budget. How many will you budget this year, do you think? Several?
Depends on the price. But yes, we'll have a dollar amount, yes.
You'll have a dollar amount. You will expect to buy some police cars during this budget year. And clearly, that's a policy decision for the elected officials. When it comes time to buy a Dodge, or a Ford, or a GM product, whose decision is that? Mike, is that something staff does or council?
So, I take recommendations from our fleet manager and our police on a police car, and those are the ones we buy.
Okay. Does it come back to council to approve it?
If it's over a certain dollar amount, it comes back to the council.
What is your spending authority amount?
$50,000.
Okay. So, you could do it without coming back?
I could buy one car.
Yeah. Exactly. You could buy one.
Right.
We see in a source of conflict, and I think it's important for everyone to understand the importance of delegating that spending authority because that's how routine administrative things get taken care of. It should be a healthy amount. And you get to decide what that amount is. And for this size city, that would be consistent with what we see around the state. We've been in places in which that amount is $1,000. And guess what that causes to happen? Every routine purchase comes through the elected officials. And you spend all your time on administrative things rather than policy things. So, that's the point of making that distinction. These are some examples of routine purchases. And in addition to the dollar amount, I think there are other things that can be delegated that keep you out of routine administrative things. If it's included in the budget, those things should be within the manager's authority in most places. Role in regard to personnel. We see a lot of times that we invite the elected officials in. And Bill and I hear this from some, "Boy, I don't know why council's so involved in these topics, yet we invite them in." And if it's personnel, let management take care of it. Land use issues will be the most difficult you deal with as elected officials. We know that because we've taken lots of surveys, and there's no way to get rid of that issue. You've got to be the ones to decide it. You will have a difficult land use decision at some point, if you haven't already. A zoning change, something that comes before you that will be difficult to determine because there will be competing financial interests, and both sides will sound right. And it will be a difficult decision. And it will be some of the hardest decisions you have to make as an elected official. Emergencies, you guys are well-prepared for that. I would encourage you to spend some time on what reports you need and why, what level of detail of information you should be getting. Questions, and Bill, I cut you out. What do you want to add? And questions from the group of you? I know Tracy was fairly new when we were here once before. Maybe a couple of times ago. You've served several years now. Any questions of us? Bill, anything you want to add? That may be a no. That would be incredible.
Thinking.
David, did you answer all of their questions? Or did you just stump them because they don't seem to have a question?
I think they're doing so well, they already know the answers to most of them. Katrina's fairly new. What, any questions you have? We should, I always like to put the attorney on the spot.
I have actually a list of questions that I'll need to talk to you about later.
That's fine.
Since I'm still learning. I do have a question from something that's come up recently. Just in my role to help protect our elected officials, if we have a lawsuit that has an attorney on the other side and that attorney approaches our council members without me being present to voice their case, that causes me concern.
That would cause me concern. Because I don't think there's an exception in the Code of Ethics that says attorneys should not contact represented parties without council present. I don't think there's an exception, except for cities. You know, that's always bothered me. It's a little bit different because their service is public. And there are times in which it can be something unrelated to the litigation. A lot of times, some of the local attorneys are very involved in what goes on. A lot of times, some of the local attorneys are very involved in what goes on in city. May have multiple different issues. But if it's specific to pending litigation, I don't think that would be appropriate. I don't, you know, I remember being in a meeting in which someone threatened to sue the city and the city manager looked at them and said, we've got an attorney. Why don't you get one? And the attorney's going to deal with this. So there's a reason we have those ethical rules, as you know, isn't it? We wouldn't do that. I mean, is it fair game for you to call the other party without their attorney? I don't think so. So, and that takes discipline for the board members, you know. I've done this for a long time. I've been to over a couple of thousand council meetings. I've fortunately worked with 99% very good people. But I once had a council member who was assisting someone suing the city. I once had a council member who, I am convinced, stole documents and provided on the someone stealing the city. We once had a vote to go into executive session to exclude a council member because he could not be trusted. We shouldn't be in those positions. We all should be on the same team. It's a team sport. And it's easy for someone sometimes to forget that based on the nature of what we have to deal with. But all of the elected officials are serving in a position of trust for the organization. So what is privileged belongs to the organization, not to an individual. There are no individual powers. It's organizational powers. So it should function that way, the way a company would do it. Public expects us to operate as a company would. And a company would be very protective of those rights that belong to the company. If we look at how we're organized, we are a municipal corporation by statute. And I don't think that's by accident. So what else, Katrina?
That's it. I was just mainly worried about their protection because I think, I'm not worried about what they're doing. I'm worried about what the other attorney is doing in the position that this person could be putting them in.
Yeah. Just need to be careful that, don't get caught up in that. It's easy sometimes, too.
Okay.
So I want to thank our guests. I'm sorry.
I have a question based on something you just said. When you do have a city councillor who is going outside of executive session or outside the council in a meeting with attorneys from someone who's suing the city, how is, does that, would OMAG still cover that person or how is that worse?
Yeah, it just depends on the circumstances. Anyone doing that would need to be real careful. I mean, I think you run the risk that you're getting beyond the scope of what your position allows. And OMAG is very conservative and always providing coverage. I can't speak for them. I'm a contractor. Bill can speak for them. But I think they go above and beyond to make sure if there's a question of whether they should provide coverage, they're going to provide coverage. So I don't think that should be held out as a threat. But most of the time, if someone's trying to get information from you when they're suing you, they're trying to take advantage of you. And that really is what's at the root of it, isn't it? I mean, that's the way I would see it. I don't know the specifics. But as a group, you've got to keep everybody on the same page. Sometimes it's education and making sure everyone understands what they're supposed to do. Sometimes it's a mistake and just by accident. It's not malicious. Sometimes it's someone who's very good at taking advantage of someone. So I think as a group, understanding the rules and making sure you're doing, always asking, am I doing what's best for the organization first? And if you have questions, you've got to get with your city attorney and get some guidance. So you're probably thinking, boy, that's a long answer. It doesn't really answer my question. How do we deal with it when it happens? There's only one group that can control how council behaves and that's the group of you. It's not Mike. It's not the city attorney. It's not the city clerk. It's the group of you. And that's one reason we encourage a code of ethics within your handbook so that you can regulate how you behave as a group. And if it's a problem, the group of you will need to deal with it. It really is beyond anyone else's control. And I've seen some of the worst behavior in a couple of cities. Fortunately, it was a long time ago and I think we do a good job of educating to avoid that so that we don't get in those situations. But every once in a while, something horrible just happens. You'll see, I think it's attached to your handbook. There is, and I would encourage you to use it. If you don't, hopefully you do. There is a sign up sheet for executive session. I encourage you to use every single executive session. It's a reminder. This is a confidential discussion. Hopefully, you're using that. It's intended as a reminder. We didn't invent it. We stole it from Owasso, I believe. If you go in executive session, you're going to acknowledge, this is an executive session. What's said here is confidential. That question comes up all around the state. That's why that form, we distribute that form and say, here's the best way to deal with it, have everyone sign up and agree. And hopefully, that helps. I think a lot of cities are now using it because it's a good way as a reminder. And you know, and it's hard, especially economic development because every one of you is going to go home and a spouse or a friend is going to say, boy, I saw you talked about an economic development project. Is that something good for Muskogee? And it is human nature to want to know more and tell more. It just is. But we've got to resist that. Some things have to be confidential. Really, on economic development, the main reason is until it's final and a done deal, it's not a done deal, is it? It just never is.
Let me thank all of the council who took time today from their schedules to be here on this Good Friday. We're just so grateful and we want to thank our guests for being here. I think an appropriate motion at this time would be to approve Resolution Number 2928 regarding the participation in the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Recognition Program. Do we have a motion to that effect? We have a motion, a second, further discussion? Roll call.
Pearllyn Boyadi-Crack.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton-Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The motion passes. That was our final item. Thank you all for being here today. We are adjourned.